Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming or for viewing at home. If that's what you're doing, I'll call the meeting to order. And Councilman Carter, would you like to lead us in the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Please stand. Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, thank you for your promise that where two or more are gathered in your name, you are there also. We celebrate and offer gratitude for the gift of life that you've given each of us. Please continue to bless our neighbors to the west as they work to put their lives back together. Tonight, open our ears, our hearts, and our minds as we go about conducting the business of Oak Island. Keep us open to the right path for our town. In your name we pray. Amen. Say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. Before we have a little video for you for the banding together effort of November 3rd, I wanted to remind everyone about the professionalism that comports with a business meeting and asking for your cooperation in terms of civility in accordance with the town business meeting that it is. I also want to welcome Lydia Lavelle, our new attorney from Bro Law Firm. We're very excited to have you on board. She has, she's been in place for a month and has hit the ground running, has a long list of items to address, and we appreciate your being here for sure.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here.
Just going down my list here. So, Mike, if you'll introduce the video from November 3rd, please.
The small mountain town of Spruce Pine, which again is in Mitchell County, northeast of Asheville, is piecing itself back together.
...water that came rushing in last week. And now, you can see, this is what it looks like. This is the aftermath.
I would say the water was a good, at least eight to 10 foot right here.
Damned for the grace of God go we, Oak Island, because it was only a couple of years ago when, when those planes were flying this way with water, medical supplies, and goods that we couldn't get for ourselves post Florence. As always, we can count on the community of Oak Island, all of you beautiful people. It takes a village, and I love this village of Oak Island.
So, thank you, everyone, for coming. We appreciate you being here. Thank you for your generosity, and God bless.
You can just imagine putting a lake right here. That's what it looks like. This is all debris coming out of these stores and buildings and stuff. Well, we made it. There's Chip. We made it, didn't we?
We did make it.
Yeah, every day, I tell everybody, every day's a better day. You know, we're getting back to some normalcy. You know, it's gonna be a long, long recovery, but, you know, every day, we take a step We have several people still in need coming on a daily basis when these distribution places are open to pick up items. As you can see, plenty of items, but, you know, the cars, when they come through, we try to load them up the best they can. And, you know, it's just, it's an everyday thing. I just wanna thank you guys for everything. Everybody's put the time and, and the monetary donations, the supplies, you know, it's going to a good cause, and it's gonna help our county get back on our feet, and we appreciate
So, it was truly a privilege to participate in such an event that was pulled together in short order, I think a little less than three weeks. It put a lot of additional tasking on any number of people, but there were a number of people who spent very long hours in the weeks leading up to November 3rd. I couldn't begin to name them all, because I'm sure to leave someone out, but my heart goes out truly in gratitude to the Oak Island staff who chipped in, the council who were feet on the ground that day to help out, the bands, the community businesses, the volunteers, and the many, many donors who helped to aid Spruce Pine's, the region's recovery. And as mayor, it's truly a privilege to serve you. I love Oak Island. I love this community. And in addition to the 30,000 in monetary donations, 6,000 pounds of material goods that were trucked to Spruce Pine on November 4th and welcomed with open arms. There were 61 volunteers, which was a huge effort, who arranged to be there on that day with jobs to fill in, whatever task. Most of them exceeded the time they said that they were allotted for, and they couldn't do enough. And also for the letters of hope that many took the opportunity to write when you saw the envelopes being put into the, the zippard envelope. Those were the letters of hope that people who were attending the event wrote to the people of Spruce Pine, and those were also welcomed. So, there's a couple of us that are going up next week to do a handoff to the mayor of Spruce Pine to give them the $30,000 that were donated. And so, we're really excited about being able to do that and kind of brings the event to a conclusion. So, just thank you to the entire community and everyone that participated. It was fabulous. And with that, I, Mr. Varner, you have the first presentation for Auto Connect, giving us a report of our parking programs this year. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As always, it's an honor to be here and proud to report our summary for our 2024 parking season. And I'm going to start with somebody's recording device. Let's start with revenue. And for some reason, the chart is not fully populating on the screen, so I'll just give you a quick summary. 1.18 million a year to date of revenue, slightly more than last year, which is good. With the chart that you are not seeing, all the nice bars that go with it, for some reason, didn't come through. Through June, we saw significant increases month to month from last year, which we saw as being a very good trend. From July through September, however, the traffic, the activities going on was down significantly from last year, be that weather, the economy, whatever the case may be. We had expected, based on the first half of the summer, to see well over 1.2 million in revenue, but with a drop-off in attendance at the beach and areas, we did not see quite that much. I've talked to several people in other businesses. Real estate occupancy of rentals was down in the second half of the summer, business activities across the board. And it's not just Oak Island, but all along southeastern North Carolina, we saw the same trend with all of our towns. Number of vehicles parked, 162,992 are the number of vehicles that we counted parked. That's people who bought a permit and people who had a season permit that we scanned. So, we accumulate that and look at how many people have come to the town to go to the beach. And there's a significant jump year to year. Hit the right button. The revenue breakdown. Day permits and upgrades definitely the driver for most of the revenue. Season visitors, about 260,000, then residents, pre-permits, et cetera. Violation payments, revenue from those driven by the standard within 30-day payment rate of 107,000. One thing on this chart that was a little disconcerning, and that is, if on the left side, if you go down to violation same day at 15:06 versus violation paid within 30 days at 21:54. This is an anomaly for me. Typically, we see two to one in favor of people paying on the same day when they have a violation. And that has held true with all of the towns that I have served, except for Oak Island. So, we are not sure why people didn't take advantage of that same-day payment. We're looking at ways that we can improve the communication on our tickets so that people can take advantage of it when they do get a citation. So, that one was a little bit of an anomaly. General statistics. I already mentioned the number of vehicles parked, 163,000. Citations, we issued almost 8,100 citations. That is, and we are down from last year. 1,781 of those were resolved very quickly. And when I say resolved, I mean adjudicated, found something wrong with it, or some extenuating circumstance that we were able to resolve and void those citations out, usually within 24 hours, netting us about 6,317 citations that we kept active. In July, we took a look at how many customer calls we received. There were about 7,000 unique to Oak Island. Sounds like a lot. It's down significantly from last year. What those calls were for, resident support, about 15% of the calls, people seeking their permits, their resident permits, new residents looking for their authorization code so that they can get their permits, people changing vehicles, which they're allowed to do once every 90 days, or people adding a vehicle. If they'd only put one or two in, they wanted to add a third. And we helped them, real time, with that support over the phone. About 38% of the people called, hey, I gotta pay for my parking. I need a permit. What kind of permit do you need? We'll set it up for you right over the phone. 45% of the calls were for violation payments. Only about 4% were disputed. The rest of them, people said, yep, okay, did it, here's my payment. And then miscellaneous, about 2% of the calls were for other things. Bulk, violation services, travel info, where's the best place to go fishing, et cetera. We'd field them, we'd take them all. In June, we looked at all of the specifics of our emails that we received. June was our largest month by far. Again, 19% was residents, 76% were violations. We asked people if they are going to dispute their violation to email us with a justification. And I'll talk a little bit more about how that broke down. And then finally, 3% had others. Bulk permits, notification services, and by notification services, the cart rental agencies, we provide a service to them for free, that if one of their carts gets a parking citation that they've rented, we notify the agency the next day that one of their carts had a violation, so that they can resolve it with their customer, and it doesn't have to go to collections and do all kinds of other things. We've had eight, I think eight companies, take advantage of that service this past year. Violations resolved, I talked about the 1,781 violations that were resolved without any issues. 494 were residents who got a parking citation because they had not registered for 19, or for 2024. They had permits in '23, but they didn't realize they had to get their permit renewed for 2024. Once we set them up with that permit, then we voided out their citation. 865 were customer typos. They had a valid permit, but they put their license plate down wrong, or they put the state in wrong. Those are easily corrected. We correct the, by the license plate on the permit, verify the permit, void the citation out, they go away, and we're done. 396 were reduced to a warning. Most of these were related to handicap violations. Handicap folks coming from South Carolina. Because South Carolina laws are different than North Carolina, they think they can park anywhere with a parking permit. They can in South Carolina. They cannot in North Carolina. In North Carolina, if they park in a regular parking spot, they have to pay for their parking. If they park in a handicap spot, it's free. Difference between the two states. So, we give those folks a little bit of education. You're parking in North Carolina now, you need to follow these rules. We also see quite a few people that don't display their hang tag, or their hang tag is out of date from a handicap standpoint. Those, once we verify the, verify, usually we have them to send us a picture of their hang tag, and we verify it with the license plate and say, yea, verily, we understand you just didn't hang it up, and we'll take the violation away. And then we had about 26 miscellaneous. These were customer areas. The most common one was they purchased two permits at the same time. You say, well, how can you do that? Well, they put one of the license plates in wrong. So, they did 1, 2, 3, 4 on the first one and said, maybe I'll do something else, and they put 2, 3, 4, 5 on the second one, and it's overlapping. So, we give them a refund for one of those because they don't need both permits for the same vehicle. Okay. Resident violation breakdown. So, we had tracked this one at council's request and did some digging to make sure we understood what was going on. Of all the residents that got a violation, 515 were parking in a no-zone, or were parking in the right-of-way. Common, this is down significantly from last year. This was over 1,000 last year. The second two big ones, space reserved for residents and no valid permit, these were just because people had not purchased their permits yet. Once we figured that out, we were able to void those out. Parking imposing traffic was more of a focus this year, especially since we put out our signage, so we started a few of those. Few for parking too long at the pier, and a couple of miscellaneous. Violation resolution stats. By far, nearly all of our violations and issues that customers had, we were able to resolve within the same day. 96% of those went through very quickly. About 4% had to go through additional investigation or review. Those are usually resolved within two days. From an Oak resident, we talked about that, 50% was resident permits, or new or didn't renew. About 40% were people contesting tickets. Majority, I've talked about this already, was typos, and we could resolve those fairly quickly. 9% were valid. Once we go through the normal review process, and the review process involves basically looking at the pictures that the attendant took, seeing that the violation was valid, and saying, yes, it is valid, or finding the extenuating circumstance where we can, there's some mitigating factor that we can resolve the issue otherwise. Very few were reduced to warning or avoided for special exceptions. I've talked about the handicap. We had two cases that we, you know, went back to the chief and his department and said, what do you think? These are two extenuating circumstances. One was resolved to the benefit of the customer, and one police department assistant chief in that case said, yes, this was a valid citation and should be held up. We had a few people call us with purchase permit issues, no app, no internet, or they preferred to talk to a real person. And once they got a real person, we were able to resolve that quickly. Few Spanish people. We do not have Spanish signs here on Oak Island. We have started putting those in place in some of our other towns because of a larger Hispanic population, and that's been very effective. One of the things that we may want to consider for next year. And then people looking for handicap space was always an issue. There's never enough handicap spaces in the lot that I want to park in, and they call us, and we help direct them to the other areas where there are more handicap spaces. Additional actions that we take for resolution of, in particular, grievances disputes, nearly all in additional investigations that we engaged in this year resulted in retaining the citation. We provide the details of the citation to the customer. We send them the citation record, which is the ticket, plus the picture of the violation that clearly shows what the violation is. We help them understand ordinance details with our section reference and why those ordinances are in place, usually safety-related activities. Collection support, we also provide customers, if they receive a collection notice and they don't trust the collection agency, and they prefer to pay us, that's fine, they can do that. We go back to the collection agency and notify them that that case is closed. This year, we had about 350, 360 tickets that we gave at the pier for staying longer than the two-hour limited duration. 287 of those were visitors, and 73 were residents. Of the 73, 69 had already registered for their season permit, didn't realize they still had a limit at the pier, and 4% registered for their season permit after the fact. After-hours residence spaces and the violations that we had there. Frankly, this one surprised me a little bit, but I understood this is exactly why you wanted us to monitor between 5:00 and 9:00 p.m. on a daily basis. We scanned over 11,000 vehicles parked in residence spaces between 5:00 and 9:00. We issued 601 citations, 5.3%. That was very effective at identifying and fixing that problem. Now, granted, a few of these fell into the other bucket that I talked about. They were residents that had not yet gotten their permits. In that case, once we figured out that they got their permit, then we could void out the citation. But this is what was left over after that. So, very effective to pull that together. Violation breakdown. Of the 6,317 violations that were left after we cleared out the first batch, number one, no valid permit, it's 2744, and no-zone violations at 1747, those were primarily on those really busy weekends, and people, lots start filling up, and people just make a spot. We've actually had some people say, yeah, go ahead and give me a ticket because I came to the beach, I'm gonna stay at the beach, give me a ticket, I'll pay the fine later because there's no place for me to park. Understood. And then the reserved residence spaces were 1175. So, those are the top three that we saw. The rest of them were just a spattering of violations in various areas. How do I say this? I would say that the simple way to say this is the bulk permit sales this year were not a success. The number of users was 14, the number of permits sold was 78. Only three of the users purchased more than four. Now, for reminder, bulk permit, there's anything greater than four permits for a single user. Of through four was $175, but permit five and greater was $325. So, we just didn't see any traction there. In several cases, and there weren't many, we had In several cases, and there weren't many, we had people from Southport or Bolivia who went together with their neighbors, they got four people, and called me up and said, hey, Jim, I want to buy a bulk permit, I want to buy four. Okay, that one person bought all four permits for their neighbors, and their neighbors just paid them. After the season permit sales were complete, that was their way of getting a season permit and using this as the process. And we also found that cart rental agencies would purchase three or four at a time and use another ID, or use their resident permits for three and then buy four, and then buy four. So the $325 rate for the bulk permit was not a hit. And we'll talk about some recommendations later on this point. Resident accounts. We actually had 3,696 new resident accounts, which, again, was a bit of a surprise to me because I thought we had the town population buying permits last year pretty well. 4,110 had previous accounts, 3,696 did not have previous accounts. Two factors there. One was the grandfathered accounts from the 2022, that they didn't have to have a separate account last year. This year, they did. So it kind of made sense once we figured that out. So total resident accounts were 7806, 1,900-plus permits. So we saw about 2.4 average vehicle permits per account. That one made sense once we figured out what had happened from the previous year. Violations, violation trends. I was thrilled, just ecstatic, at the April-through-July violation rates. Went down from 4.2 to 3.5%. You might say that issuing 8,000 citations was a lot, but for the first four months, 3.5% compared to where we were last year, 4.2, and beginning of last year, a couple of months at 5%, this was great news. It really was a, I think, a benefit to working with the town staff to add more signs, add better signs, more communication. And then we got to August. And I don't know if it was because storms and people came out and said, hey, nobody's out here, I don't think I need to pay for my parking, nobody's going to check me anyway. And guess what? We were out there. If the town was open, we were out there. And we saw that big uplift in August, 4.5% in September. That's kind of sad. But all in all, we were slightly down year to year. But still, I was very happy with the first four months from a violation standpoint. Violation payment rate, pretty much same year to year at 78.3%. We've got still a couple of months here that we'll still pick up a few more, so I expect it to be pretty close to last year. Again, I mentioned it earlier, same-day violation of 1503 versus 30 days of 2154, that one is a little disconcerting, and we're going to continue to do some analysis on that. Getting the communication out to the residents is key. Too many people did not know or remember that they needed to register in 2024. And as a result, they got a ticket. Once we figured it out and got them set up, then we could get rid of the ticket, but it was still a lot of extra work on their part and our part to clean that one up. So we would like to see registration available as soon as possible for residents for 2025, as soon as we can get approval from the council. Second challenge was the pier, the pier sensors and the gateway. We worked with town staff several times, trying to find a place at the pier for us to plug in our gateway, and had a lot of conflict and interaction going on with the team down there. It just took a lot of time, and it caused a lot of consternation when somebody would go and unplug our gateway, rendering the sensors useless at that point. Second issue, we had people who physically damaged the sensors, and we had to replace, I think, six. So that was not optimal. And we'll talk about an alternative for next year when I get to the next. Last one, the bulk permits did not have the desired effect that I think council was looking Successes. The value of the temporary signs we put in for the direction of parking was huge. We saw almost every day, people, new people would come and go to park, park down some of the side streets and just pull in on the other side of the road, walk over, see the sign, back their car up, and park it the right of way. If we had not done, put those signs out, we would have had three or four times the number of violations, just for that one reason. The 24/24 season permit sales were much easier this last year than they were the first year. First year, with the limited number of permits and trying to sell them in person, that was a challenge. This last year, we sold them all through the app and over the phone. With the 1,500, they didn't sell out right away. They actually were available for a month for people to buy from the time they went on sale. That was much easier to deal with. We've had a significant reduction in calls and emails, down 40% to 45% year to year. And hopefully, with maturity, with our system and experience, people will continue to see that drop. Last success was that I wanted to highlight was the residence spaces after 5:00 for enforcement. Really good success there. So, in summary, I've got a few recommendations for the council to consider going forward. Since this is just a presentation, there's no decisions tonight, so don't expect any. Rate changes. I know last year, you considered rate changes, you may want to consider them this year. I would not propose any. The rates that you have now are competitive and exactly the same as the other towns in Brunswick County that have or are considering paid parking for next year. Second, date changes. You may want to consider October enforcement. We actually had several phone calls, including one of them from the police department. Sarah called us one time and said, hey, Jim, we've got a problem on such and such a street with people parking in the right of way, and can you go out and help ticket with them? Not after September 30th, I can't. By contract, I can't go ticket for that. So we could help if we had extended into October. I also note here, Holden Beach has now gone to paid parking year-round, effective this year. So last year, they would have ended October 31st, they're now continuing with their paid parking. Visitor season permit quantity, I would recommend moving to 2,000 and then eliminating the bulk permits, just taking the 500 that we had in bulk permits, adding it to the season permits, and just making it one bunch. And sell it equally to individuals or to golf cart rental agencies, other groups. Availability for 2025, we can start as early as December for residents, and I would recommend that we start selling season permits for visitors in January. Pier. Couple of options here. We can renew the sensor contract, but with the challenges that we had there, I would probably not recommend that. In fact, I won't recommend that. We have developed another feature in our system that since we, when we scan a vehicle, we capture the time and lot that it's in. We've added to that capability to record that information going forward. So for a particular lot like the pier, I can say, hey, you parked at 9:15. Well, if I come by and scan your license plate at 10:15, I can say, oh, yeah, you've been there an hour, you're good, you're within two hours. If I come by at 12:00 and scan that same vehicle, I know that you've exceeded your two-hour limit, and you get a ticket. There's no additional cost to that. That is something that we can do within our current system, and we can eliminate the challenges that we had with the sensors, changes associated with it. The sensors were by space. And we had some people try to play games with that and say, hey, I've been here for two hours, I'm going to move my car to another space. With this new system, it's a lot specific. You get two hours in the lot, no matter what space you're in. So you can't just move your car and play games like people were trying to do this last year. So I would recommend that kind of approach for the new year. So for your consideration, I'd be more than happy to spend time with town staff and go through more details if we need. I have talked to town manager. She and I both feel like this is a better solution for the pier parking lot and still allow us to maintain that two hours of free parking to facilitate the businesses that are there. Last is the resident parking spaces for after-hours enforcement, excuse me. This last year, we charged $50,000. If we do it again next year, I think we can charge $25,000 for that additional service. Because of the value of the citations, it'll help pay for our staff for the evenings. I don't need to make a lot. We spent a lot this last year making sure that we overcovered it. I think we understand exactly what is involved today going forward, and if there was a desire for the town to enforce it more than just April through September, we would be able to support that as well. With that, I've concluded my update presentation. If there are any questions or comments.
Counsel?
Yeah, Jim, thank you very much for that. I put together a list of questions, and you addressed a lot of those, but I still do have a handful of questions if you can kind of go back to slide number one.
The one without the bar graph.
Actually cancel that.
You're on two different slides.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Could you answer the next slide? Okay. So violation collections, it shows here 533. I'm sorry, it shows, if I total up the violations in column A, they're the quantity. My math, I get 5,092 violations, and the next page, you call out 6,317 violations. So that's a difference of about 1,000 violations, which I could.
That's correct. These are violations that have been paid. This is not the total set of violations. The 6,317, those are citations written. The numbers on this page are the violations that have been paid within the current year, year-to-date. They're still receiving payments.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next page, if you could, please. One more. So 865 customer typo with valid permit. How many of those, were those all customers, or were some of those the auto staff members who mistyped on their device?
All of these are customer typos. The mistyped would probably have been in the miscellaneous. I think we had about 16 of the ones where our staff, you know, either scanned wrong or typed in wrong. A lot of those, we were able to identify before the customer even got involved. So we did not have very many auto typos.
Okay, so it was only 16 were the.
That were my fault.
Okay, if we go to the next page, if you could, please. So you put in temporary signage for the opposing traffic, that small red arrow.
Yes.
Okay. So the fact we had 246 violations, I would want to include, make sure that in the plans for 2025, that there's significant increase in the signage with respect to the opposing traffic. Because that's, it tells you that's not effective, having those small red arrows, so.
It was very effective putting it in there. Could we put more up there? Yes, we can put one in with every sign.
Yeah, I think it's more the size, so some, most of the streets, right, especially the one-way streets, you can clearly see it's one-way. However, when you start to move further down from Beach Drive and you move to Pelican, there are no more one-way signs. It's only on Dolphin and on Beach Drive. So that third row, there's no one-way traffic signs. They've disappeared.
Oh, we can add more of that.
Okay. So that is a, I would, if you looked at where that took place, I would think that there's a number of them took place over there.
We don't distinguish between second and third row, it's always whatever the cross-street zone is, so I don't know where on that street it would have occurred. I can't track that, but I can agree with you that we certainly can add more signs.
Yeah, so that, and then with respect to the next one, the signage, the signage at the pier, and you and I have talked about this, the signage at the pier was less than optimal, right? There was, the big sign that's at the pier now is the cocoa sign that says two-hour free parking, and that's it. There's the small signs that are not on every one of the posts at the pier. Again, was a little bit confusing, and the number of, all of us received a number of emails and phone calls from residents who didn't realize it was a two-hour because they didn't see that sign. So increased signage at the pier would be a big ask for us for 2025.
Sure. I can certainly work with staff to make sure we get that done.
If we go to your slide number 10, please. So the way, again, doing the math, so we were charged $50,000 for the 5 to 9, and we collected roughly $15,000 in revenue for this season. Is that, that's pretty accurate?
Sure.
So you're willing to.
I don't think you've actually received all of that yet, but yes.
Roughly, if, assuming everybody pays.
Yeah, assuming everybody pays.
So moving it to $25,000, is that as a result of, you know, less staff? Or, if you could, maybe expand on that, please.
It was a combination of. It was a combination of the staff that was most effective and what we believed was a greater income from tickets than we had expected. So we didn't expect to see any income from citations, which is why, you know, Mr. Kelly and I had kind of pegged that $50,000 number as being the reasonable charge for that. Given that we did see revenue from citations at a higher-than-expected rate, then I can charge less for that activity.
So talking about staffing, if we could, just, and I think that'll wrap it up for me, Jim, but thank you. So talk, tell us about staffing. Then, I didn't see it in the presentation, but as far as, you know, typically, the staffing you had on a weekend during the season versus during the week, and then from five to nine. Did you have, can you give us a feel for what that staffing level was?
It varies by day. On the weekends, especially big, big weekends, we had everybody out there. We had eight people local, and we had two other people available from outside the area if we needed additional help. During the week, Monday through Thursday, we typically had three people working. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we had five or six. Heavy holiday weekends, we had eight. What we found was most effective was one person could cover evenings and scan the entire island for residence spaces at least twice.
So you, for, when you think about 2025, are those staffing levels about what you would recommend?
Yes. We found that those were very effective for this last year. The only, oh, I say that, and I'm going to channel Councilman Kraft here for a minute, who asked me on a regular basis about improving our scanning technology, and we are continuing to do that. To the extent that we can invest in better scanning technology, we will adjust our staffing commensurate with that. The challenge, as I've talked previously, associated with scanning is, if we live in North Carolina, a lot of people like to back in to a parking spot, and we have to go around to the backside of their car to get to the license plate to scan their tag. That takes additional time. North Carolina has all these license plates with two little letters on the right-hand side. Those two little letters are part of the license plate registration. So I may have 1234NC on it. NC is part of the license plate registration. When we go to scan the tag, we don't know what that customer put in. So if we put in 1234NC, and it comes back and says, no permit, then we go back, and we have to run in, put in 1234, thinking that the customer left off those little two letters. And 90% of the time, they did. It has a valid permit, and we move on. Those are cases where scanning technology does not work in this environment. So we have a trade-off there. We also have to deal with, in North Carolina, license plates do not have the letter O. It's always a zero. But what did the customer put in? So we have to run it both ways. So now you get a save-the-turtle license plate with 5023SC. It's four versions of that license plate that we have to check. Zero or O, with or without the save-the-turtle notation. And probably 99% of the time, one of those four versions will have a valid permit, and we can move on. Those are problems that we cannot solve with scanner technology. But back to your point, Mr. Chulo, yes, I believe that the staffing levels that we had this year are appropriate, and we would intend to maintain that same capability next year.
So one last one, I'm sorry, at the pier, you talked about the possible alternative. So the sensor technology was not as successful as it, we all hoped it was going to be. And tell me, tell us again, if you could, what do you propose moving towards?
What I propose moving towards is scanning tags more often and recording for the pier lot, recording every license plate that's in that pier in a special table where I can control and monitor how long that car's been there. So if I scan that lot every half hour, in two and a half hours, if somebody's still there that was there the first time, I know they've exceeded two hours, and I can give them a citation. How often we scan it? Could be every 15 minutes, every 30 minutes, every 40 minutes. It'll vary depending on the demand, the number of people parking in the general area, whether it's in the 604 lot or up Barbie or, you know, in that area. Will kind of dictate how often we can get through there, but we'll know right away if somebody's been there more than two hours.
So the scanning technology, which you mentioned about the North Carolina license plates being problematic, is going to be problematic at the pier the same way, or is it going to be different?
It's exactly the same way, but once we figure out that, if we scan a tag, we know, you know, that customer did not put the tag in for the pier lot. We did. So we can apply our standards for that scan. So it's a completely different situation.
Perfect. Thank you.
Welcome. Any other questions?
Yes, if I may. I'd like to take an entirely different tact here, look at a much larger picture. I want to go big picture for a moment with you. I'm going to ask you to give me an informed speculation. So we've had two years of paid parking, right? And we're roughly at 1.1 million. Can I use that as an anticipated baseline? Because in year one, for example, we lost Memorial Day. This year, the end of the season was problematic due to weather, and I'm going to assume that's fairly typical. So is 1.1 a reasonable baseline going forward? Because I don't see us increasing capacity dramatically. So we have the capacity more or less fixed. You've done two years, thank you, both successful, one better than the other, at least marginally. Is that something that we can project forward? Again, reason, speculation?
Reasonable speculation, absolutely. I think you're going to be within that 1.1, 1.2 million. There is, there is, with the 1,400 spaces that you have, here or take, there is capacity, I mean, there is capacity for growth within that, largely because you're only full a few days of the year.
Right. And that was the algorithm we had a lot of trouble accepting, and I understand that.
That's great.
So being able to, some reasonable degree of skepticism, say, this is the baseline, right?
Yes.
As we go forward, short of raising rates, this is the revenue stream we've created. And the point I want to make to the public is, this paid for expanded personnel and services and obviated the tax increase that you would have felt. So as we go forward into budget, I want to know, I'm asking and you're answering, yes, that this is a fairly reasonable assumption?
Yes, it is.
Short of recession or succession of horrible storm?
Horrible storm, yes.
Okay.
Or expanding space? Or the possibility of expanding space?
Yes, well, one can always hope. We'll see. We have a traffic study, so, thank you.
If I may, are you, are you, are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. I'm going to pat you on the back a whole lot, but I am going to ask some questions for my own edification. First, job very well done, sir. The first thing I wrote down was cart rental. You notify the rental companies immediately. I didn't know we were doing that. That's ingenious. The culprit gets caught up with within 24 hours before they leave the, before they leave the island.
Before they leave the island. That is correct.
The second thing I wrote down, not yet registered, 494 citations. Once they re, once they cleaned it up and bought their permit, you reduced it to a warning.
No, sir. I voided the citation completely.
Okay, you voided the citation. And what I wrote down was, good customer service, softer, gentler town. That's one more reason why 5,000 people didn't yell and scream and call auto surf cast names. Very good customer service. No parking citations or right-of-way citations, 515. That's down from 1,000 the year before, you stated. Was there any towing involved with that?
No, sir.
So you give them a ticket, this jumps out as one more loophole to me. You give them a ticket, and then they just stay there all day, and they-
If they do not pose a safety violation, we do not go down the path of towing. If it does involve a safety issue, then we call the police department, have them assess it, and look at whether or not it should be towed. We do that in conjunction with the police department. We had one case this year where that process was invoked, where somebody parked blocking an emergency access to the beach. We did have the police department come down. They were able to go out and via bullhorn identify the owner of the vehicle, and they moved the vehicle. Yes, they still got a ticket for parking there in the first place, but they did move the ticket, the vehicle without it being towed.
So the answer to me is that you and the police department have this under control?
We try real hard. And we appreciate, whenever we call them, they know it's a big enough issue to respond, and they've been very good at helping us with that, and I appreciate it.
For housekeeping, do we need to put on our webpage, would that be beneficial to you, a list of where the handicap spaces are? If people, if they don't find a handicap spot on Kazea, then they just start driving around hoping they can get lucky. And so many times you said they contact you, asking you where a handicap spot is.
I think it would be beneficial, definitely. We are adding that same information to our website, so we will be glad to work with town staff and make sure that we've got consistent information there. At this time of year, we haven't started it yet, but we go through and do a lot-by-lot assessment, look at the spaces, we look at the signs. Some of the signs that need to be replaced due to damage, some of the signs have gone missing for whatever reason and need to be replaced. So we do that as part of our off-season work so that we can be ready to go come April. As part of that, we're going through and looking at exactly where all the handicap spaces are and recording them, especially for those areas that have mobility access to the beach. Either the mobi mats or, you know, emergency access, flat ramps kind of things. So we do that information, and we work with your public works director and make sure that we're consistent with that and report it back to Catherine and the team.
Lastly, and kudos to Councilman Chulo, he did a lot of research, a lot of due diligence, came ready to ask you a lot of questions. But one question that was asked, and you all agree that the 601 nighttime violations would be $15,000. 601, if they haven't paid yet, they already got past that $25, so I would think if it was a $50 ticket, 601 tickets would be $30,000. $30,050.
So right now, we've collected $21,000. That particular violation does not carry with it a $25 same-day violation forgiveness. That violation is automatically $50. So I stand corrected, and I apologize for not doing the math more quickly in my head with-
Those Catholic nuns used to hit me with the ruler. I can do, I can do some math. One last question, and it might be for town manager. Would sign, and I like the October idea, would additional signage offset our profit if we had to change all our signs? Because down at the bottom of it, it says-
So if you changed the dates, basically, all we would do is put a sticker over the September 30th, and not change the whole sign.
Okay. I like the October idea. Thank you for everything you all have done.
Any other questions?
From counsel.
I just had one quick one. So your fee reduction for after-hours enforcement for 2025, you said you'd be willing to lower it to 25. Is that based still on the seizing ending in September, or are you assuming we're going to add October, or would you like us to do year-round? And would your fee change if we did add October or went to year-round? Would it go even lower?
If you added October, it would not make a change. If you wanted to go year-round, I would have to go back and reassess because the revenue potential for November through March is less, so I would have to go back and reassess that. I don't think we would change it much.
Okay.
But I would expect that one to go up slightly, to do, to do after-hours all year-round. October, I wouldn't change at all.
Last call for questions. Jim, thank you very much.
It's been my pleasure. Thank you all.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Jim.
Next presentation, Chief Morris, Beach Services Unit End of Season Report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, good evening. It's a, it's nice to stand before you here tonight and report that we finished up this beach service season fairly unscathed this season, so it was positive. I feel like it was a successful season for us. One thing that we did have, here's our beach services members that we have on staff, and of course, these are part-time employees. We had 10 part-time employees, and then we had Tom Hathaway, who was a fill-in. So the first year, or the second year, we had everybody to come back from the first year. Now, our third year, this is our third-year running beach services, we only had one to come back. So we had a brand-new unit moving forward this year. So anyway, we put them through a training session that lasts a day, and from town ordinance violations training, dealing with people, communication training, to operating the UTV. So we go through that series of training before we push them out on the beach, and they, their beach services know exactly what we expect and how we anticipate them to communicate with our residents and our visitors. So just a recap of the BSU unit, they're part-time seasonal employees, they're not sworn employees, they're not police officers, they're just civilian staff, and they do not carry firearms, and they do not have the authority to make arrests. Members are certified in CPR, however, they are not trained in conducting ocean rescues or is swimmers in distress. I know that our beach services unit worked collaboratively with our ocean rescue team this year, which turned out to work out very, very well. The ocean, the ocean rescue team was a great addition to our beach safety initiative as a town, and just add another layer of our presence and our safety on the beach each and every day. But our BSU, they conduct beach patrols while operating our UTV. They enforce town ordinance violations, they frequently interact with the public, and assist with non-criminal public safety matters. When they have, when they do have an issue with an unruly person on the beach, or they have a difficult person, they call the police, and then the police will go down, and we will assist them. Briefly, our objectives is to patrol the beach. We fly on each UTV, we fly a beach safety flag on each one, we monitor the ocean conditions. So if it starts out as a green day, as a- So if it starts out as a green day, as a calm day, as the day progresses, it may turn a yellow day. We're communicating with myself and the fire chief to make sure that we communicate and get that information out to the public as soon as we possibly can. They provide a lot of assistance because as they patrol down the beach, everybody has a question. Where do you go eat? What's the parking? Where do I go in Southport? Where's provisions? So they're really that face of that customer service that we do have here on the island at the beach. But one thing is that, you know, we have the enforcement of our town ordinances that we do. If someone has their dogs off the leash, you know, there's an evaluation process, and then a verbal warning may be given, a citation may be given. Someone's on the sand dune. Someone's blocking the emergency access. So that, they're charged with enforcing those town ordinances and to prevent the damage to the dune system through their presence and also to ensure the emergency beach accesses remain clear. So here's our schedule. Of course, it starts a couple of weeks before Memorial Day, and it runs through the Labor Day. We had a total of 137 days of patrol. And I put this picture in here specifically. If you look, not center, but maybe at 10 o'clock from where I'm standing, you'll see the Beach Services UTV working its way through the crowd and, you know, literally the thousands of people that visit our beach each and every day. And, but that's what they're faced with, you know, and it's long, hot days. And I really appreciate that the group that we have, the exercise, the patience and the professionalism and the customer service that they do offer every day. So the way beach service is structured, they're structured in three different zones. And you can see from the map, the west end, our central Zone 1, Zone 2, and Zone 3. And we stagger, we stagger the employees from 7:00 a.m. and then we have coverage until 6:00 p.m. So in a nutshell, we just don't bring three folks in at the same time at 6:00 in the morning because there's not as many people on the beach at 6:00 in the morning. So, or 7:00 in the morning. We stagger the shifts, and when we're fully staffed, you know, we've got those three patrols, Zone 1, Zone 2, and Zone 3. And you can see how we've divided that up. Okay. For, you can see the 2023 and 2024 statistics. Our dogs-at-large, our verbal warnings are very consistent with where they were last year. Our sand dune verbal warnings have significantly gone down. You know, when I, you know, of course, this is our third season. The first season that we had beach services, the sand dunes was a huge issue, and we had people violating that town ordinance just continuously. It just seems like it happened day in and day out. I think we've somewhat got a handle on that. We'll never reach zero, but we do have somewhat of a handle on that through our presence, through Ocean Rescue's presence, through the communications that Mike Emery sends out. So I think we've got a decent handle on the sand dune violations. The holes on the beach, of course, they're significantly down as well. I know we see a lot of that on social media. Post up throughout the summer, somebody will take a picture of a large hole. And so, but however, our numbers are somewhat down this year. Our glass bottles, you know, people are going to drink on the beach. And, you know, a lot of times you'll go up to folks and they have a beer or they have a beverage and it's in a glass bottle. Of course, that's a town ordinance violation, and we'll have to work through that. Our blocking the emergency accesses wholeheartedly. Most people have no idea that they have parked in the emergency access. Once they get onto the beach, they'll set up their tents, they'll set up their chairs and whatnot. So we go by and immediately tell them to say, if you guys don't mind moving, 99% of the time, they pick their stuff up and move. So that's a huge help if we have to, if our emergency personnel have to respond to the beach for an emergency. So our written citations, of course, our dogs-at-large remain our largest citations or the number of citations that we write. The dogs-at-large, and what that means is the dogs are unleashed on the beach. And then our sand dune violations are up from 7:00 to 11:00. Holes on the beach, the glass bottles are significantly up. And of course, you can see the blocking emergency accesses, the pier violations and electric bikes that we generally deal with. And a lot of times when we have stuff like that with the electric bikes or these one-wheel electric devices, people just have no idea. They say, I had no idea I could not bring this to the beach and ride it up and down the beach. So anyway, we include that as well, and it's a town ordinance violation. So our verbal warnings, you can see from 2023 to 2024, we've got a significant decrease, you know, from a 51% decrease. Our written citations are up from 23 to 24, 121 to 175 this year. And in conclusion, each day or after a beach services member comes in from staff, they fill out a log. And one of the logs is how many times you have communication with citizens. Now, this is a rough number because they're constantly talking with folks, and I ask them to write it down, but it's just repeatedly over and over and over. But that gives us somewhat, you know, of a snapshot of almost 7,000 people that this group of 10 folks, you know, have talked to, you know, throughout 100 and some odd days. So, and this year, we drove just a little over 10,000 miles. And we have shovels that are on the UTVs, and if they see a hole and someone has left, they fill it in. So they pick up trash and they will fill in the holes. So it's not just talking to people and customer service. You know, they're really concerned with the safety of our beach, the safety of our folks that go to the beach, and they also keep it clean. And that's, I think, after the third season, we've pretty much got it figured out, you know, about the beach services because we've had some trial and error over the last few years. And it's working, you know, it's working for us. You know, it's working for our town. It's working for our community. And I appreciate their efforts each and every day because some days it's 98 degrees out there, and you're dealing with some folks that they've lost their mind when they cross the bridge over here. So there's the first line. So a lot of days, you know, it's like that, but we worked through it. And we've got, the staff is very mature and can handle those issues for the most part. And we're appreciative of that. And, but that's it. That's my wrap-up for the 2024 Beach Services. If anybody have any questions.
Counsel?
No. Congratulations, Chief. You have established a benign, caring, very useful presence on the beach, and we see it all the time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right.
Thank you very much. Do you hire mayors? Chief, do you hire mayors? Okay.
Do a background check.
Just curious. Asking for a friend. Next is adjustment and approval of the agenda. We, with council's approval, asking to remove 1.4 from the consent agenda, which is the consideration of a lease with US Cellular. There's a little bit more work to do there, a late request. That's the only amendment I have. Are there others that council would like to see?
I'm good.
You're good?
Is the additional work required for that item a staff recommendation?
It's a legal recommendation.
Yeah, we just, I just got it last night, and there's a couple of things I want to look at on it.
Okay, fair enough.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move the agenda, Madam Mayor, as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Excellent. Thank you very much. Approved. I'm sorry? Did I miss that? No, public comments first.
I'm sorry.
That's all right? Yeah, usually you're correcting me, so it's because I skipped some. Next is public comment. And again, just a reminder that it's the speaker's responsibility to monitor your time, which is three minutes, which is pretty customary, at least in the state of North Carolina for municipalities. And also as part of that reminder that a short time span, after that three minutes, the microphone at the podium actually turns off. So just please state your name, your address, and... Do we have anyone signed up?
Thank you for that explanation, Mayor, but I have nobody signed up.
That makes it really easy.
Save it for next month.
I did a good job. I get an A.
You scared them off.
I did. All right, council reports. John, would you like to start?
I'd be happy to start, Madam Mayor. And let me start by congratulating you and your organizing team on banding together. It was an extraordinary event, and as you mentioned in your opening remarks, put together in a very short timeframe. Two things really struck me being there. One is because we were partnering with another town, it felt very personal. It felt as if we had a connection to the recipients. And the other is, you know, we hear various descriptions about living here, the beauty of it, you know, the calm, the pace of life. But I think there's another dimension to it, and that's the generosity of spirit that people here have. My job is giving out QR codes, and I don't know about you folks, but I hate raising money, you know, asking people for money. And I gave out 50 QR codes, and only one person said, no, I don't want that. The other 49 said, oh, great, thanks. Oh, this works on my phone. So it was really a wonderful event to work because people were in that spirit. So congratulations. And I'll also say thank you to all the service members, those who have served, who are in the audience. And finally, have a wonderful Thanksgiving with your family.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I'll echo what my colleague said when the video came on. I simply had cold chills because I remember what that day was like. It was not the best weather day that we've had here. It was cold. It was windy, and people came out in droves. And it's just amazing what this community did. So kudos to all of you, to the town staff and the volunteers who put this together. And I'll say, if you haven't had anything from Johnny Cheesehead, you're missing out. Next time you see the Johnny Cheesehead food truck, go get you a gourmet cheese sandwich. They're awesome. Want to report that we had the second steering committee meeting last week for the comprehensive land use plan update. My colleague, Mr. Kraft, and I are your council representatives to that steering committee. We're starting to cover some ground on that. Our next meeting will be in November, excuse me, December. There'll be a public session in February, so please stay tuned for that. We need lots of folks to come out and provide their input. And in case you haven't heard about it yet, there is a survey currently out from the comprehensive land use plan folks. And so encourage everyone to go take that survey. They tell us it's about eight minutes, and there'll be valuable input about our current goals and our existing land use plan and what we're going to look at for goals going forward. So please participate in that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I want you to the environmental advisory committee's meeting this month, and they asked me to be sure to announce that this coming Saturday, from 1:30 to 3:30, they will be doing shoreline cleanup at the shoreline at Veterans Park. All volunteers are appreciated. That is Saturday, 1:30 to 3:30. Also, the environmental advisory committee is giving away awards already determined who the three recipients are. Hagensun, Solar Brewing, and Sweet Tree for Storm Water Preparation Prevention. They are the three stars that are getting an award on November 21st. I asked the town manager. I told her I'd get a couple of phone calls from people saying they cut down a bunch of tree limbs and they have debris in their front yard. And the truck just came by two days ago. Now all that debris is going to be sitting out in the front yard for a long time. Town manager told me to tell people to go to the website. And at the very bottom of the website, on the extreme right side, is a express your concerns. And if you put on there, I just cut down a whole bunch of tree leaves at 412 Barbie Boulevard, the right people will be aware of it. So I guess I said that right.
Report a concern.
Report a concern. Friday, I went to the 801 Center, the Art Guild, Oak Island Art Guild. Wow, there's some people that are talented. Acrylics, oil paintings, photography, tremendous displays. Saturday, I went out to the Quilt Guild. They gave away quilts to deserving local military personnel. Wow, that was moving. Bryce Taylor has arranged to put a bunch of edging around the butterfly garden out at the Veterans Park. I wanted to give a shout-out there. Lastly, a guy called me and told me there's rats in his backyard. And I said, golly, that sure is bad that there's rats in your backyard. I don't know what to tell you. And he said, I'm going to put up owl boxes that will attract owls and that will chase away the rats. So that's a public service announcement. I thought that was, I thought that was pretty good. And that's all I have.
Well, how do I follow that? So I wanted to just share that we're blessed to have one new member here and one newer member here. In my career, I've been blessed to work with several talented and gifted team leaders at firms, large and small. Catherine Adams is one of the very best I've ever worked with. I've had the opportunity to interact with Catherine a number of times since becoming town manager and find her proactive approach, strategic thinking, and ability to get things done quite refreshing and needed. I'm so glad that council unanimously agreed to make Catherine our full-time town manager. Thank you, council, and thank you, Catherine. I'd also like to welcome Lydia Laval, our new town attorney. In the short period of time, one month, we've been under contract with your firm. We could not be more impressed with your responsiveness and the quality of your work product. You have a lot on your plate, goodness knows. And we will be patient as you cross off each of those items, so welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll try to be brief. So no RPO updates this month. I mentioned last month, we wrapped up our prioritization and concluded that effort. So I would just like to add to the November 3rd Band Together effort. This story actually comes from, I think Chief Price is the one that told me about it. I talked to a lot of people that day, but I bumped into him later in the day. Almost at the end of day, I was still there. And he told me that while he was out interacting with people, a family from Spruce Pines was actually vacationing in this area that weekend and had no idea what we were doing. Heard about it, came over and wanted to say thank you. And they tried to talk to as many people as they could, shaking hands and saying thank you. So I just want to thank Chief Price for being a part of that. I think he witnessed some of the interaction. Chief Morris, maybe it was you. Like I said, I talked to a lot of people that day. So I just wanted to call that out. Again, we are an amazing community. We band together. We love everybody, even the people from other towns in the state of North Carolina. So thank you so much for opening your arms to them and sharing your experience with them. They had a blast that weekend, and they were so grateful for our effort, so thank you.
Last month was a very busy month. And the reporting on the top three items, of course, I think we've pretty much covered the Banding Together event. That certainly was a privilege. I've also been invited to participate in a panel discussion at next week's North Carolina Beach Inlet and Waterway Association on the issue of sand, or as they've expressed, sediment. It's somewhat of a, the beginning of a journey that we open with discussion for managing sand on more of a system-based or regional approach. And hopefully, following up that meeting with subsequent seminars, et cetera, to try to move from discussion to action. There's a lot of work that really needs to be done in that area, and the ocean doesn't recognize our town boundaries. So I think both economically and environmentally, on any number of levels, that taking a broader approach and a different look at how we preserve our beaches is a worthy discussion to have. And my role is representing municipal government in that panel discussion. The other is today... The other is today, this morning, we opened the bids for dredging for our own construction project that was scheduled for this fiscal year, so it would happen in the spring before the turtle season. The mobilization costs in the two bids that we got were really astronomical, and there's, we could look behind those numbers, and they were, there are a number of reasons why that could be the case. So those options, we will discuss with council further on Thursday. It's already on the agenda. So the two bids that we got, one was from Weeks Marine from Louisiana, the other Great Lakes Strayjin Duck out of Houston, Texas. And, you know, this will cause a delay in our project probably from the '25, '26 to, no, I'm sorry, '24, '25 to '25, '26. So the delay will be about a year. Looking at this with a glass half-full perspective, this also gives us a longer runway to examine other options and other funding solutions than what we currently have in place. And this coupled with the discussion that's beginning at the NC Byways meeting, which is actually being led by Boem, this initiative is actually happening from a federal government level, that this, I'm hoping, will open us up to opportunities that don't currently exist. So I don't think it's all bad news. I just think we need to figure out how to respond to the information that we have, which is council's job to do, and we'll talk further about this on Thursday and perhaps arrange for a presentation to bring the community up to speed, maybe as early as December. So stay tuned on that. And that's pretty much my report. So a motion to amend the consent agenda, I'm sorry, not to amend, to accept the consent agenda with the one amendment.
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving right along. Committee appointments. This is for the Business Advisory Board. We have one seat for a three-year term expiring in September 2027, and one seat for a two-year term expiring in September of 2026. We have two candidates, Alec Allred and Heather Reeves, and those applications are in the agenda packet if anyone wanted to read those. Those are the ballots, council having voted, being passed to Lisa, and we'll pause here, give Lisa an opportunity to catch up.
Yes, ma'am. There are five votes in favor of each applicant, and the only direction I would ask from council is to which applicant you would like in the term ending September 2027, and which applicant you would like in the term ending September 2026.
Is there a method to do that?
No, it's just council, we can do that. Or if you want to tell me, do it alphabetically, or whoever applied first, or whatever you want me to do.
So options on the table is show of hands by the order in which applicants were submitted, or alphabetical, or is there another method you prefer, council?
I think submission will do for this process.
We in agreement? The order of submission?
Consensus.
Any objections?
Okay. Thank you. And that would be Mr. Allred filed before Ms. Kinlaw, so.
All right, so he will fill the one seat for the three-year term expiring in September 2027, and Heather Reeves-Kinlaw, I'm sorry, I left off the last name, is for the two-year term expiring in September 2026. Congratulations to both of them. Administrative reports. Catherine?
Thank you. While Mike is pulling that up for me, before I even start, I'm just beaming with joy at my privilege to announce to you our two newest employees. Sitting on the front row, we have Helen Brink, who will be assuming the finance director position. Yay. And while she's coming up, I'll be announcing Mr. Andy Sneed as our new assistant town manager, and I've asked both of them to just say hello, introduce themselves briefly.
I've been here for about six months now. I come from a long background in accounting, but in a whole different realm. So the finance department here at the town and Catherine have been wonderful, helping me transition and learn so much, and I just think it's an honor and a privilege that I get to take this opportunity to be your finance director. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Very excited to be here, very excited to finally found a way to be here full-time. So my family have been property owners in residence for over 40 years, they've been, and during that time, I've lived here off and on when I could figure out a way to do it. And they've been part of the town and the community for a long time, and I've always known this is where I was going to end up in life. So I'm excited and very thankful for the opportunity. Just very briefly about myself, I've been in public works and designing construction for better than 30 years, retired from NC State in 2021, and been in the private sector for a few years, and really looking forward to being here. By education, I'm a mechanical engineer, also licensed in civil, so really looking forward to getting to know the town and the community. So look forward to seeing you all in a few weeks. Thanks.
So Mr. Sneed shared that he learned carpentry at the ripe old age of 16 during the summer here on Oak Island.
Wow. Nice. Well, and right outside of our offices, two doors down from my office, unbeknownst to us, is a picture of the inaugural board of the Town of Oak Island Town Council in 1999, and one of those members is his mother.
Oh, correct. That's awesome.
It's a wonderful group of people we have here, and I'm so proud. Thank you. Just go briefly through my slides here. Continuous reminder about our customer service efforts and signing up for our OKI information, where you can get your emergency information, your emails, texts, and newsletters to keep you informed. As Councilman Kraft said, we do have the easy button on the front page of the website. Please take a moment and check it out if you haven't already. There are six circles, and it's the sixth circle on the right, and it'll get you straight to any of the departments that you need to go to, and that is so much faster for us to get you direct information instead of coming to your council, coming to me, passing it down to the departments. We want to get you directly to the person who can answer your questions the quickest. And then I'm happy to announce two new items that have been in the works for a while in our customer service efforts. Our new GIS portal has been created and is ready to launch. It's a mapping effort for a visual presence for our citizens. And finally, a mobile app for OKI Connection. So getting to it on the computer is not convenient for you, just download the app on your phone. I'll tell you a bit more about it right here. OKI Connect, whether you have Google Play or the Apple Store, if you'll just go straight to download the app, you can see it on the bottom left there, it says OKI Connection. I've been in beta testing for a while with Apple, so we finally got that approved, thanks to Mike Emery and his persistence to make this a reality. And it's a simplified approach to being able to get directly to the same things that you can get to on our website as you're walking around. The GIS portal is a wonderful new mapping data set by one of our newest employees, Kristen Bauer, and she and Matt Kirkland have worked extensively, and we're so proud of their new mapping portal that will be going live this week. Just briefly what it will touch on, it will have visual mapping for beach access, designated garbage and recycling zones, LSV navigation routes, sidewalks, crosswalks, flood hazard areas, and soon we'll have all of our capital projects that are in process. We'll also have an aerial imagery to have a bird's eye view of the area, thanks to Shaun and our drone capabilities to give that better perspective on landscaping and our infrastructure. And finally, they're working on a story map concept to share continuous information in a visual that'll be available to all of our citizens. And that's just an example of one of the concepts they're working on, so they'll be able to color code, show you exactly where the components are. As was mentioned earlier, the charting the course land use plan update continues. That's a graphic representation and the QR code for the public survey. I encourage everyone to continue to engage with us through that survey. It's open until December 7th. We also have paper copies available downstairs. There's an engagement map. We're still taking feedback there as well, and our next steering committee meeting on that is December 11th. We've talked a lot about that wonderful banding event, Banding Together event, where we raised almost $30,000 and a huge truck full of donations. Couldn't be more proud of this community that day. Coming up, a big special event, our annual Christmas by the Sea Parade. Please get your applications in for your parade entries. They are due November 20th. And again, you can find them at our website, okinc.gov/parade. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Catherine?
Bravo.
Thank you. Consideration of a contract for recreational facilities assessment and the Oak Island Rec Needs Assessment. Catherine, is that you?
Yes. Long-awaited start to our recreation rec center project. Yay. Clap for that. That's a great one. I know, we're so, super excited. This is just the beginning. This is the initial feasibility study. We did the RFP, had a committee evaluate, and have developed the contract that's before you tonight with an architectural firm. They will do needs assessment and analysis of our existing facilities and give us proposals for options to go forward. There are several options within the base contract or in addition to the base amount. So we've presented those, and our recommendation is that we would like to engage their services for all of the options listed in the contract at council's pleasure. It is within our allotted budget for this year, so no additional funds are necessary.
Do you need a motion for that, Catherine?
Yes, please.
Any questions for Catherine before?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Well, at long last, first of all.
Yeah.
Let me put it that way. I have a question about the way this contract is structured. So some total is 101 change, two. The add-ons are $37,000, so almost 40% of the total, and the largest single total in the add-ons is community engagement at $18,900. And while I'm all for community engagement, I'd like to know what it is they're doing for $18,900.
Yeah, good question. That is optional, and that is negotiable, but that is built on three members of theirs in preparing and attending two workshops onsite. So it includes the travel associated with those three individuals for two meetings. They also offered to include McGill, their sub-site designer. They would like for that firm to be present as well, so it includes their costs, travel time, and it also includes all the printing of their high-quality presentation boards, graphics, and other anticipated presentation items that they think they might need. I did speak with them, and they said that if there are printing options that we would like to take out of there, and we could do those ourselves in-house, they're open to those discussions. We could certainly limit the engagement to one instead of the two that they have proposed in light of our land use plan and very robust communications and surveying that we've been doing recently. So that is an option as well.
Well, I'm comforted by the first comment that you made, that all of this is negotiable, and I'll leave it to your best judgment. It's just that number jumps out at me. When you have 40% of it, the total budget is an add-on cost, even though staff's recommending it, it begs the question, so. And you, I think, have answered it, that you can go back to them and smooth off some of the edges, so to speak.
If I could just make a comment, I certainly understand your point and your concern, but in my experience, having worked on projects of this type and this magnitude, those input sessions do take a lot of work. The community engagement does take a lot of work. In some ways, it's sort of like a design charrette, if you will, and usually a lot of really good information comes out of those things. The key for us, as with everything, is to get participation, community participation, get folks to show up. But I think it's a worthwhile portion of the, we don't want to shortchange ourselves on the front end when we've waited so long to get this project going.
Questions, comments, council?
Two, if I may, please. So the total cost would be 101,200. Remind us, what was the, what did we put in the budget for this?
So in total, we had half a million dollars allocated, but this is just the first step of that process. So assuming we can continue this and get it complete, the second phase is also already budgeted.
We didn't break that down. We had 500.
Correct.
Okay. And one other area that's, I wanted to just throw it out. So on, in the contract, on page three, Article II, so both 2-2, owner identifies the following representative authorized to act on the owner's behalf, and it mentions Heather in here, who does a great job as a recreation director. But my request would be, might it make more sense to have you as the contact because such onerous responsibilities, "The owner shall render decisions and approve the architect's submittals in a timely manner," and to put that on a staff lead as opposed to town manager seemed to be a little bit heavy.
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
I certainly work with Heather, and we have a great committee that's been working on this.
No offense, Heather. You do a great job. Thank you, Catherine. That's it.
My only comment is, for someone who works on projects, particularly at the design stage, many projects get tripped up or parts of the project may fail because enough of the effort wasn't invested at the front end. So anything that we invest in the front end, I would argue that it saves you a great amount of consternation and challenge. I would argue that it saves you a great amount of consternation and challenges at the back end of the project. Just an observation. Go ahead.
What I'd like to say, I've been waiting two and a half, three years to get to the point where we say, we are getting ready to do something about the rec center. I understand what Councilman Bach's saying. I understand what Councilwoman Carter's saying. I think we've had some community engagement on the rec center discussions in the past. I would not be opposed to one community if you could talk down that road. But after we talk down that road, I want us to get to the next step. We talk to companies and talk to people and they give us renderings and they show us stuff. And then a year later, we find somebody better. I'd like to go home and tell my, my two puppies that we've got a rec center in the works. So I hope we do something besides have a couple of meetings. I hope we get on with it.
I just had one question. It's a kind of a continuation to what Councilmember Bach brought up initially. So on page seven of the, their contract, but page 63 of our packet, the add-on services, and I haven't seen this, and maybe this is a legal question, it says pending written owner approval. Typically, I see language that says something about upon successful execution of this agreement or something like that. So I'm, and I couldn't find any cross-references to defining a written owner approval in their contract. So what's the clarification here? Is it if we sign this, those additional fees are included? Or do we have to provide some sort of addendum to this with our own language that says we're willing to purchase these additional services? It wasn't clear to me what pending written owner approval meant because it's not defined in this contract.
And Councilman Martin, where exactly is that on there?
It's, it's on there, page seven. Our page 63 says right there in parentheses, for each one of the additional services, it says pending written owner approval. So.
All right. I'll, I'll look into that. I'll get an answer for you.
So to that point, if we approve, or do we approve this pending your legal review of, are those services executed with the signature? Or is there some other required document? Can we do that this evening? At least maybe approve this with some additional legal review or?
And I think also, we could approve it, but pending those further negotiations on these additional items. If you give me that authority, we would work together and bring back some final numbers that might be less than what they are there.
Approve it for the town manager and the town attorney to be given authority to go forward. Then you all work out the details.
Manager, can I request that in looking at cutting from two public input sessions to one, we get a little more detail from them because often they're not the same thing. There could be one at a certain point and then they come back with a product based on what they learned from the first one and seek input on that product. And that, that's the second one. So I, I would hate for us to skip one of those steps if that's actually how they're gonna set these things up.
I'm comfortable with the language that we have the opportunity to negotiate it. And I don't want to be parsimonious at the front end and pay the price later. But I think out of due diligence, when 40% of the total cost is add-on, we need to ask what, what we get in return. And what I hear the manager saying is, it's going to be negotiable. And I have complete trust in her. Okay. That means two, or it means one that's extended, or whatever it means when you sit down with them, with council.
So, council, do we have a motion?
Correct.
Be happy to make it. Okay. Yes, I'm happy to make it. I make a motion to approve the contract as presented, pending legal review by the town attorney and the town manager.
Does there a second?
I'll second that, yeah. Because review implies some degree of negotiation, yeah.
Yeah. And I think we've included in our discussion some points for the attorney to explore further based on our discussion. So I'm comfortable with that language.
I'm comfortable.
So we have a, go ahead, Lisa.
I just have one question, just to put it on the record. So if we have review with the manager and the attorney and they're absolutely convinced that all of those optional services are needed and will benefit the project, are they authorized then to execute the contract with that full amount of the add-on services?
That's my understanding.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We've told them what our thoughts are, but then once they get, peel back the layers of the onion, they'll know better than we do what's best.
Do we need to amend the motion in your, I don't think so. Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. Is, all in fa, and a second, all in favor? It's unanimous. Awesome. And I am absolutely ecstatic to announce that there is no new business.
Madam Mayor, before we, I just want to clarify, were we expecting an update or report on some ordinance issues tonight? Or is that not going to happen tonight?
Oh, you know what? We had your report. Thank you. I jumped ahead without asking our attorney for her report.
Is this, apologies. Is this about all the, the list of the various code violations? Yeah. Bob Horneck with our law firm has been sorting through those and I believe he has a meeting scheduled with Matt on Thursday to kind of talk through not just how to deal with the backlog, some of which may have fallen by the wayside, but how to deal with those and how to move forward in a more orderly fashion. But I, I know I had reported that to Catherine, that they were going to be chatting on Thursday about that. And I know that one of the most urgent ones was already kind of being handled another way. And then those others, he's figuring out a way to kind of move forward with them. So.
Apologies for skipping over you.
That's, that's fine.
Is there anything else you have to report? So that, does that satisfy your question? Do we have a motion to adjourn, council?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate it. And we got out of here less than 8 o'clock.
Kentucky at 9:30.